Good evening. My name is Mayor Mike Wickers and this is the business meeting for the Cottonwood Heights City Council for February 21st, 2023. I have not asked yet, but Mike, could I ask Mike Johnson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, Mike. Item three on our agenda this evening is something that we do once a month, where we have the city council give a report, a three-minute report on what they, some of the things that they've been working on or have interest in. And so I'm going to begin with inviting our council member from District One, Doug Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. Been a very eventful week for all of us in the, on the council and, and the mayor. The last three weeks, I've primarily been working on the ordinance. It's a sled ordinance. I know that many of you think that sleds is something you use to go down a hill really fast, but it's, it's about sensitive lands and the repairian is not about a bird refuge. It's about the, the creek sides and proximity to building and other activities. But we had a wonderful town hall meeting last Wednesday and grateful for the, the great attendance which we've had there. Today is working a little bit about, I'm also on the PTOSS Committee. That is something that you also, I'm certain are not aware of, but that's the parks, trails and open space. And my primary objective today was, is trying to get volunteers at each one of our parks to try to help a little bit, be stewards of those parks and help a little bit on guardians of our parks. And that part of that is watching them cleaning, help clean up and different things like that. So that, that will be in the newsletters as well that I was able to write a little bit of a, they allowed me to do a little bit of an article on that. We also, I'm on the business committee and that has to do with a vital part of our city is the blessing we have of having businesses within our city. That helps our tax base. We're so grateful for, and we try to promote the businesses within our city and so grateful for them working with us as partners. I'm so grateful for the opportunity which we have to work with them and we have ribbon cuttings. We've had a few of those very recently and we're so grateful for that opportunity. Grateful for each one of you that are here tonight. I'm certain that each one of you have different topics that you're interested in. Hopefully each one of you knows, you know what district your representative is in and that you're in. I'm in District One, Scott Bracken. District Two, Sean, Sean is in three. And Ellen Farrell is in four. And the mayor is the mayor of all, all of Cottonwood Heights. But I'm grateful for the opportunity to be able to serve and, and hope that each one, if anyone here is in my district, or even if you're not in my district, I'd love to get a phone call from you if you have any concerns about what you need to know about in Cottonwood Heights.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. In District Two, we have a council member, Scott Bracken.
Um, I would, second, we had the repair in Orient. We had a really good town hall last Wednesday. I think there was some a lot of misunderstandings, but there was a lot of engagement on how it was written. Hopefully we were able a lot of misunderstandings, but there was a lot of engagement on how it was written. Hopefully we were able to get a lot of what was communicated to us from the residents into the revised ordinance that I assume will be coming out fairly fairly soon. The entire organ overall, I think, will serve us very, very well on handling with various sensitive areas in the city. I also spend time on the Wasatch Front Waste and Recycling Board. They collect our trash and recycling every week, have other programs. On my our next meeting, we'll be discussing the what was formerly the area cleanup program with the trailers that has now moved to the a trade of reservation reservation system, looking to modify that so it will better serve everyone. As we go year to year to year, there are some budget issues and operational issues that hopefully the board will be able to come to some improvements on the way that has been handled that well has really been hit hard because just finding people to drive the trucks to do things like that. It's not as easy as it used to be. Our youth council is still going strong. For those who may be interested, or if you've got someone who is going to be in high school, ninth grade through twelfth grade next school year, our application timeframe is going to open up middle of next month, thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth of March. For about three weeks, applications will be available online. There's a a link on the our section of the city webpage that has that information. It's great to to work with the youth, the students. Have a really good grasp of what's going on as we go through our educational portions of those meetings. Discuss things that are going on in the city. They really have a good a lot of good ideas and a lot of comprehension as to what's going on. My the other committee that I work with is C H two, that's the city and the Cottonwood Heights Recreation Service Area crossover. We meet each month just to make sure that we're on each other's same page as various grants and various recreational activities happen in the city. It's good to make sure that we're on on the same page with them. They do a lot of really good things in the city. And that's one of those responsibilities that the city then doesn't have to deal with. But that was almost perfect.
Thank you, Councilmember Bracken. I would just add that the mayor and council are looking forward to doing a dinner with the youth city council next week, so that Scott does a great job with that group of young kids. In District Three, we have our council member, Sean Newell.
Good evening. I have the great fortune of being able to serve not just our city here, but on a number of different councils as well. One of them is our Arts Council, also our Legislative Council, the Emergency Preparedness Council, our budgeting Council, and then also I get to represent the city for in the capacity of a board member now of the Canyon School District Foundation. In our Arts Council, we have a great group of people that really put in a lot of time to bring arts and entertainment here to our city. And I would implore you to look for opportunities to be able to not only attend these events, but to be a part of them, to volunteer. We have this summer coming up, a play, Guys and Dolls, that's going to be really good. We've got some new folks that are experts in the field of putting on a production like that. We've also got this Friday, the Sweetheart Paint Night. I'm hoping my wife doesn't paint me, but she paints a picture of me that's not really nice all the time, but this will be a good activity for fun, but it's a great way to spend some time with your spouse here during the month of February. We have the Easter coming up in March. I think it's March twenty seventh is the date of the Easter Easter egg hunt. And that should be a great event. We're hoping for great weather and to get a lot of our residents out there. With our Legislative Committee, there are a number of bills going on. As you know, we're right in the middle of our legislative session. And our city works really closely with the League of Cities and Towns to be able to have conversations and dialogue around some of the bills that may impact us as a city. And we want to bring that information back to you. You can check our website out. And we also push out other bits of information concerning some bills that may impact us as well throughout the session. In emergency preparedness, I'm going to spend a little bit more time on that just by my last minute. There's a number of activities. We have some cert training. We really want to get some more volunteers out there to be a part of that program. It gives you a great opportunity to be able to lead in the case of emergency in our city, but also to represent your neighborhood and you get to know your neighbors a little bit better. Coming up on the February twenty-second, we have the Cottonwood Heights Police Citizens Academy. Has anybody in here ever attended that Citizens Academy? Hey, we got one. Hey, a couple. That's a great opportunity for you really get in to learn about how our police department works, how law enforcement works, and to get a chance to know quite a few of our officers as well. The Great Shakeout is and if most of us should be familiar with that, I hope we are. If not, we can help you become more familiar. That's going to be happening on April twenty-seventh from nine AM to noon. It gives you a great opportunity to understand how we should be reacting. It gives you an opportunity to lead also, and I'm done, but I'll talk more about this on the next round.
Thank you, Councilmember Newell, and I'll I'll put a plug in for you on that that shakeout. If you don't know what that is, it's a great way to participate by putting a ribbon out on your door and so that it helps our city be able to organize in the event of an emergency to know who's in trouble. So you can put a certain color ribbon to to know whether or not city needs to help you if communications were down. So anyway, in District Four, we have our council member, Ellen Burrell.
Thank you, Mayor. So let's see, in the last month, I held a town hall meeting. We had about thirty-five people in attendance. We were here for two hours and it was a really great exchange to hear what was on the mind of people. People in my district have found this winter, needless to say, a very challenging one with the traffic that mounts on SR two-ten Wasatch Boulevard. They're looking for, you know, some help. I'm I'm hoping that we can perhaps do a little bit more with some of our officers coming out on these snowy mornings and helping residents to get in and out of their neighborhoods. We know that ski bus service was reduced this year. Yet I want to acknowledge both the Cottonwood Connect Program, if there's any skiers in the room. You can for ten dollars reserve your spot on a bus up to any of the four resorts through that program. And as well, the Wasatch Beck Country Alliance has also arranged, and I believe their shuttles are free going up on peak days. Instead of transportation here, I want to make sure everyone in the in Cottonwood Heights knows about the zero fares going on through the end of this month. You can take tracks, bus, or train for free. And it's a great chance, if you've never ridden front runner all the way up to Ogden or down to Provo, it's a real thrill. I highly recommend it. Some of the other things that came out in the town hall meeting that I held on January thirtieth was residents are very interested in the Canyon Center. Whether the the public space there can be developed sooner than later. And so if you're familiar with the Canyon Center that's located just south of the seven eleven there at the mouth of the canyon, the city I'm happy to say we've gotten council support to try to get some of the initial plans for that small park off the ground in this calendar year. I also want to bring to your attention that related to the UDOT E I S for a gondola. There's been two major developments. One is that the Wasatch Front Regional Council has agreed to let UDOT have their now one point four billion dollar gondola in the twenty fifty regional transportation plan. This has been very disturbing to many of us that again, the Wasatch Front Regional Council that is there to look after our communities and help us plan is going to go ahead and and put that in their budget for now through twenty fifty. And just other quickly, also, UDOT just announced that they'll be postponing their Record of Decision, which is their very final step related to the gondola process, their environmental impact statement. And they are postponing that until the summer of twenty twenty-three. It was supposed to come out in the next month or two, so that again has been postponed. And so, thank you, and on we go.
Thank you, Councilmember Burrell. Appreciate that. So just a couple of things that I as the the mayor am working on. One of the one of the opportunities that I have every month is is to attend a meeting called the Conference of Mayors, where all of the mayors within Salt Lake County get together and we discuss items that of business that are important to all of us and that that we're working on. We were able to host that meeting this past week, which was fun to have all of the the local mayors here at Cottonwood Heights, let them see the beauty of of this city hall and how we designed floor-to-ceiling windows so that you could see outside and see as much of the beauty of our city as as possible. Now, one of the things that we had been working on for two or three months was a video, so we 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 put together a promotional type video of our city that we're going to be releasing to the public here shortly. That was fun, that was able to, like I said, highlight some of the cool things about our city and who we are and the committees that that are made up of the of the city and and then what we're trying to do. So I am also a member of the the Board for the United Fire Authority. And we met this morning, actually, and are working on just our beginning in the beginning stages of a budgetary process, just like we do here with the council as we begin our, you know, budgetary process for this the budget year that will begin July first, and we're doing the same for United Fire Authority and the board really plays an oversight role in in determining you know, where to where to allocate funds within United Fire Authority, which is you know, really important because we want we want to provide as much protection. And you know, they're a public safety body, so we want them to be able to protect us, but also to to be financially responsible as well. Councilmember Neil talked for just a second about the Legislative Policy Committee that he and I and our city manager, Tim Tingey, serve on. And I've mentioned in the past, it's it's a really important thing that we do. We we involve ourselves with the League of Cities to make sure that the bills that get presented up on the Hill are are taking into account cities and 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 the roles that we have. Many, many bills come out that don't think about the the financial impact or the land use authority impact that that it has on cities. Just today, we talked about a new homelessness bill that came out. And then the city will be paying a little bit higher of a percentage for the homeless communities that exist in our community. There's a there's a there's a possible bill that keeps being talked about almost every week that we go up there about infrastructure districts that that the legislature is talking about allowing developers to create their own infrastructure district with their own eminent domain authority that would bypass the the role that the city has in in, you know, determining how we are. And so that those are the types of things that are really, really important that we stay on top of as a city to make sure that we're protecting our interests. So thank you for listening to that. I appreciate that. Next on our agenda is our citizen comment period. This is a time for our our citizens to address the council concerning whatever they desire. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please review the public comment procedure on the last page. If you haven't filled out a speaker card, please do so and hand it to a staff member who will get it to me. When making comments, we request that you were speaking to the microphone so that your name can be heard and recorded and that you avoid insulting language or comments. The audience should avoid expressions of support or disagreement as well. The council is here to listen, but you shouldn't expect to engage in a back and forth during this setting. If you do raise questions, our staff will respond to you. So I just want to distinguish before we move to this, we also have a public hearing portion that is separate from tonight's citizen comment period. The public hearing is in specific regard to to issuing bonds for the Hillside Plaza purchase. And so if I call your name and you and you would and you're here to to speak in the public hearing, please, please let me know and and we'll wait to have you comment until then. The first comment part I have for the citizen comment is from Nancy Hardy. Hi, Nancy.
City Councilwoman. I'm thankful for Mixler. I was in my car, turned it on and heard just one minute, couple-minute clip about the property on Wasatch, the open space property for the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. And I think when that land was purchased, was it implied that it would be an open space area? I'm not sure, but hearing about a parking lot, and I think it was mentioned a little bit of parking could be built. And what happens when that fills up quickly? People will be driving back and forth on Wasatch in and out of that area or parking illegally. So I'm in favor of of a little shuttle, kind of like they have at Zion, just a, you know, real small version. And if you build it, they will come, and why not try it? It's, I think, Cottonwood Heights could be forward-thinking and forward-doing, and you can always build a parking lot later, but you could have just a open space with bike racks for people that will be riding their bikes along our bike path to get there. And the shuttle drop off and some maps. And I was also wondering, there's a park and ride just as you head up Little Cottonwood on the left-hand side. Will the Bonneville Trail be going near that? That that could be a parking lot for people to park because that's already existing. And if the if the trail is near that, people could park there, or they I think there's a parking lot at the top of ninety-four hundred in Wasatch that goes up that hill. If the Bonneville Shoreline is going to go near that, that could be served the parking lot and you wouldn't need three parking lots in a row. So I think that's all for that, but I also want to give a shout out to Ellen Burrell for always reaching out to the citizens of Cottonwood Heights and informing us of all the meetings and things, not just for your district, but for everybody. It's it's just so nice to, you know, see what's what's going on and I know it's not easy to write all these updates all the time and I'm impressed. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Will McCarville.
Excuse me. Now I got a frog in my throat. Thanks for the opportunity to address the council tonight. I'm Will McCarville. I live at three six oh seven Golden Hills Avenue and I'm in District Four. What I'd like to discuss tonight is Ordinance three ninety-four amendment. This amendment is needed because all hazards were not identified prior to investing huge amounts of time and effort into developing P D D two. The sludge process is designed to determine the actual buildable area so development can then happen with reasonable certainty that it can be successful. This amendment should be applied to P D D two only. It should not provide a get out of jail free card nor establish a precedent for future developments on sensitive lands. This should be a one-time patch. I'm I am concerned this amendment can lead to a slippery slope improper application of the sleds process in the future that do not fully assess hazards will likely lead to developers asking for higher allowances for the shrinking developments after unbuildable areas are found after projects are approved. This bypasses the P D D concept. So my ask is, please approve this amendment as only a one-time fix to P D So my ask is, please approve this amendment as only a one-time fix to PDD two. And this should not become a standard operating procedure to make up for the fact that sleds did not identify all the hazards before developments were approved. I would also like to do a shout out to Ellen, because I also appreciate her informational emails and keeping me up to date, so thank you, Councilperson Burrell, thank you.
Thank you, Will, appreciate it. So the next person, let me just make sure, so I have a card from Claire Geddis, are you here for the general comment period or for the Hillside Plaza Bond Public Hearing? Yes, the the public, the public hearing is next, so yeah, if you, it. Okay.
And the reason I was with Claire Geddis, I'm in Ellen's district, and she's doing a great job. You just mentioned the League of Cities and Towns, and I wanted to bring something up, because I've worked on Capitol Hill probably with two different organizations backed all the way to nineteen ninety-two. And I specifically did utility regulation, there were just a few of us, we were really involved heavily. Would go down and be involved in the rate cases and everything else. Well, come to find out, we had one big bill, there's been two or three of them, but one was House Bill three sixty, which I still remember. Many years ago, it was a bill written by Questar Gas, which would have changed their regulation in their favor and then away with our, consider our community group that represents citizens. The League of Cities and Towns supported that bill. And I was shocked, I couldn't believe it. It was one of the worst bills on Capitol Hill that's ever come out. In fact, we were able to, in a year, have it repealed, which is never happened. And it was my, the legislator who wrote the bill, Dave Yor, who's, he sponsored it. Told me that it was Questar that wrote the bill, I was on take two with both them. But I was, I was amazed that the League of Cities and Towns supported that, that's not the only one that they had supported. There was another one where, I think it was Utah Power and Light then, that a bill that they were trying to stop one of the rate cases when they were over earning. And the league supported that, we'll come to find out when I start looking at it. The league takes a lot of money from the utility, both the gas and electric. And when I was up there, I found far too cozy a relationship between the league. And it's changed, I'm not saying that it's right now, but it's sad that I had to fight my own city to keep utility rates affordable for the public. So I just wanted you to know to really be careful when you check those bills out. Just because somebody told you they were good sometimes, and I'm not saying that's the way it is now, I'm not going to judge them. But it was very unfortunate and caused us a lot of trouble. And thank goodness, we were able to repeal that bill, it was a year of hard, hard work, so thank you.
Thank you. So next we have Ellen Nielsen.
Thanks for hearing me. I'm glad to be here tonight. I live, our families lived in this city since nineteen twenty-eight. I have a piece of property in section number two down on Cottonwood Cove Lane. I would like to see something done about the regulations about chickens. Um, we've had chickens on that property since we've, the family's been there. We currently have about twenty chickens and one rooster there. And I usually run a little more than that, because we use the eggs, I have quite a large family. And we have allergies towards other eggs and stuff like that, once you've had homegrown eggs. We have, we raise them organic, and we've always farmed the land, that's been its use since day one. Uh, we used to have, run our cows on the property behind us here, where Brighton High is, that was my grandfather's property. So I'm asking the council and what we can do to change the ordinance for people that have zoning for horses, cows and stuff like that, like that area is with acre or bigger lots, to lighten up the ordinance. Like for instance, if you're on a quarter acre lot, you can have six chickens, my understanding, no rooster. Well, I have over three acres and I get six chickens and no rooster. So it's the same on whatever size lot it is that you have. And that's where I'm like, this is kind of a breakdown on, you know, especially people that have owned the property and it's just passed through the hands of the relatives and have, you know, has never been been sold outside of the family. So, it's kind of a, you know, the grandfather rule I think applies. I'm in the middle of a lawsuit right now, fighting this with Cottonwood Heights right now. I actually go to court tomorrow on a pre-hearing. It's been going on for about a year and a half, back and forth, if we have the rights to do it under grandfather laws or not. Uh, the, the prosecuting attorney just last week threw out everything that we had down to one thing and brought in the, another prosecuting attorney, and now we're starting over tomorrow. So, it's been kind of a battle just to get this through on that. I, I think it's unjust if the the conditions of the property haven't changed to allow it to continue to go on without using it for the same reasons. So, those are my concerns, I'm hoping you guys can address them and let me know where I need to go to change it. If I need to get a, you know, get a petition going or whatever I need to do, so, thank you.
Thanks Ellen. Uh, next we have Clarence Zitting.
Thank you for hearing me, I, I also live on Cottonwood Cove Lane. And I also have an acre, and I've been there for probably thirteen years. And I've been farming there for, since I've been there. And I also have chickens, and it would be nice to up the flock. I also want to chime in on the importance of having a rooster to protect the hens. Um, we have a lot of wildlife comes through, um, there's foxes that get in, they get in the hen house. And the roosters actually bite off the foxes, so I just wanted to add that. But, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the roosters and the chickens in that area, we're all on one acre lot, so. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you Clarence. So, Tim, I think you have some, some names to read in, right?
Yes, I do, these were some comments that came in prior to the meeting. And I'm going to read them as, not read them, but I'm going to enter them into the record. Um, one is from Suzie Elson, and she, her comments relate, relate to the plotting the city on the roundabout and also wanting to promote maintaining the character of the city. Fight the gondola and the widening of Wasatch. We have Doug Ganji who emailed about concerns with not being able to have access to fiber in the community. We have Mike Keeney who had questions and comments related to mother-in-law or basement apartments. And then Julian DuPont wanted to express support for the repair and protection standards. So all these, I'm entering into the record, they're part of the record and they'll be forwarded to the council as well.
Thank you, I don't see any other hands up online. So with that, I will close the citizen comment period. Item five point zero is a public hearing, specific to five point one, let me give you some background information. It's a public hearing to allow input regarding A, the sales tax agreement to be entered into by and between the city and the Cottonwood Heights Community Development and Renewal Agency, Utah, for the repayment of agency's sales tax and tax increment revenue bond, series two thousand and twenty-three. And any potential economic impact that the project described therein to be financed with the proceeds of the bonds issued under the act may have in the private sector and related matters. I'm going to have our administrative and fiscal services director Scott Jurges come and give us a little bit of background before I open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you Mayor, just to give a little bit of background related to the bond and the purchase of the the land. So we're anticipating purchasing the land for fourteen million dollars. Um, having an additional approximate three hundred thousand dollars of closing related costs. Not, probably not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars. Um, in terms of the financing of that purchase, one million would be financed through a grant that we've received from the state of Utah. Um, the remaining thirteen point three million would be financed utilizing a bond over a twenty-year period. Um, that bond would be somewhere in the range of five to five and a half percent. We're getting close, probably within a week or ten days of being able to lock in on a rate on that. And then we'll know our specific rate at that point in time. Um, the payment on that, we're anticipating to be around one point one million dollars annually, give or take a little bit, depending on the interest rate on that, at the time that we can lock in. Um, and then as, as the mayor read in here, that bond will actually be in the community development and redevelopment authority area. And what the city, in essence, the general fund would do, would be to guarantee that bond and provide the funding to be able to pay that, because the CDRA fund does not actually generate any income to be able to pay for the bond. And then that's kind of the relationship between the general fund and the CDRA fund related to this purchase. So I don't know if there are any other questions or clarity that you were looking for.
No, I had, I had one comment, I've now read this four times, and I think I got it down to my speak at least. The public hearing is A to comment on the potential issue of the bond, which would be backed by general fund money from the city.
Yep.
And the other B part of this would be to have, if there was any concerns about impact of us purchasing the land, the CDRA purchasing land, that would have any impact on the public, the, excuse me, on the private sector.
I think actually it's the, the project itself, if it were to operate in a loss, then that would, we would need to kick in some money to to cover that, right now it's not operating at a loss. It's operating at a level that we don't anticipate having to kick in any funds for that. But if it turned into that, and I don't think it would be a huge amount of money, it, it, that would be minimal in terms of our, our potential exposure and impact on that, in terms of an annual basis, so.
Taking comments on those two, potential, those two items.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you Scott. So I will officially open the public hearing on this five point one item. And it looks like we have a speaker Claire Geddis.
Thank you. I have some real concerns, in fact, I oppose this. I've worked on also a lot of RDAs and PDAs and all of these at the legislature when I was up there. My concern with this one is, we're going to buy a piece of land, or you are, that this gentleman has been trying to sell for several years, according to the, the commission. And we don't have a developer. You know, this, this, the way this is being set up leaves us all the risk. You know, I don't like my tax dollars or me guaranteeing private industry at, or investment. Because I don't understand, if you had somebody that had come in and you had a drawn up plan of what was going to happen and how you were going to finance, that's one thing, that has not, none of it's come about. All we're saying is you're going to go out and buy a fourteen million dollar piece of property. You know, I don't believe government should be in the business of speculating on land. It just isn't part of the purview of public citizens. I mean, our, our councils, our cities, we all assume they were there to do services, not to go out and buy shopping centers, I mean, I've never heard of anything like this. And for you to ask us, you know, somebody says, trust me, and believe me, I've seen that many, many times. I've been in this business for many years, and without some guarantees, what's going to happen? We're going to get left holding the bag. I don't understand how you would feel comfortable purchasing a piece of property for fourteen million dollars that you don't even have a developer on. And the only two people that have approached it won't do it, because you don't like what they're doing, which is fine. Your way to be able to regulate that is through zoning, that's what the purpose of the council is. I know that they said they had too high density, well, that's why we use planning and zoning. But I don't understand how you're going to run this and even get a developer. When you get a developer, does he take over the, can he take over the bonds? I mean, I've heard they may sell it, they may just, I mean, I've heard all kinds of things, and there is no one proposed idea. And I don't think that's the way you do it, I talked to a couple of, I have friends that are large developers back east and talked to them. I mean, this isn't the way it's done, you should be out putting out something, if you want to do this, put out an RFP and say, this is what we want, and then find a developer, you want to do it after you buy it. And we don't have any guarantee, we don't know where the economy is going, we don't know what will happen. So I would urge you to think long and hard and not to do this, thank you.
Thank you, next we have Randy Whitehead.
As you know, I'm Randy Whitehead and I am quite in favor of the Hillside Plaza property purchase. And I represent just under two hundred residents of Cottonwood Heights that are very elated with the prospect of the city purchasing the the property and developing it, to have both a public and a private per, uh, purpose in mind. Uh, the committee has come up with many different ideas uh, of how to develop it. Um, a presentation was given to the city council three or four months ago regarding that. And I just want to let you know that there are many residents who have spoken to me that are willing to help do fundraising for some of the development ideas. Uh, there are those that are willing to help do a lot of the work. Um, there is a concept that I am going to be meeting with the Central Utah Valley Water Conservancy District tomorrow. That they have offered to have a portion of it, to develop a portion of it, to help the residents see ways to use landscaping in a water-wise manner, which is especially relevant to us in this city, given the shortage of water. Yes, this year we've had aberration and there's a lot more. But I am overwhelmed with the support that I have heard from residents, not just in our neighborhood area, but through all of the districts of the city. And so I just want to commend the city council for considering this and also let you know that there is as much support in any and every way you want, that's willing to help the city accomplish this purpose, thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Next I have Stuart. I'm sorry, I can't, Brown, is that right? I'll let you pronounce your, your last name for us.
You have it correct, Stuart Brown.
Okay.
Um, am I allowed to ask a question before I comment?
So, uh, the, this is not really back and forth, and there's reasons set for that. What we can promise you, Stuart, is that we'll respond back to you.
Okay, so the, the question that maybe responds back is, is the city in the development business, do we have a development team? Do we have, uh, real estate people to do all of this? Uh, also because I'm not familiar with most cities getting into the development business. Uh, if we're buying it for speculation. Uh, if we're buying it for speculation, question is why? What is the forecast to, uh, increase the city's coffers if we do do this? If you're a developer, you're doing it for profit, right? So therefore we should have a profit in mind. Uh, current valuations of real estate are currently going down as interest rates go up. Federal forecasts are meant to go at about five and a half, that pushed ten-year treasury to about, call it six and a half somewhere, uh, sorry, seven. And then, uh, the value of that real estate probably won't be as high if that's the case. Obviously this is a long-term program, but I'm not exactly in favor of city development. Uh, mostly these bonds in the future for other ones are done for tax incentives. A lot of it's around, uh, low-income housing. I've done a number of those projects. Um, very different structure. Uh, this does not seem to be structured, uh, tax incentive ways, just more of the city wanting to buy the property. My comment.
Thank you. Next we have, uh, Larry Larson.
Hello, Larry Larson. Live up on Timberline Drive. I have a question about the purchase of this property. I personally believe the business should stand by itself, stand on its own and not be subsidized. Now, when they developed the part up there around the racket club, uh, they gave them twenty-five years. They don't have to pay any property taxes. And I just question that, that not fair to the rest of us who are paying property taxes. And I have a question, whether you plan on subsidizing or spending our tax money on whatever development goes in there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I don't see any other comments. So with that, I'll close them.
Talked about that the two hundred signatures has came in. We have thirty-two thousand people in this city. And I don't, half of them don't know. In my area, everybody was outraged, but you can't get them out on the nightlight tonight. So if you've done a, I would think if you do a poll or send something out, that would be one thing and let people vote. Most of those you can vote on. So I disagree with the gentleman who said, there may be some in his area, but there aren't in any of mine. And I don't think most people want to guarantee private property developers.
Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing process. Item six point zero on our agenda this evening is a consideration, uh, and for six point one, consideration of ordinance three ninety-four, amending the PDD two zoning ordinance enacted under, uh, um, ordinance three sixty-three dash A. Uh, we discussed this item earlier in our work session. Are there any other questions or comments from the council?
I would like to make a, a comment on this, uh, PDD dash two. Uh, when I came into the meeting, uh, this evening, I had had a, a good conversation with our Economic Development Director, uh, who helped me to be crystal clear that this is a one-off, uh, exception, you could say, uh, that we're doing for the North Gravel Pit, uh, PDD project. Uh, however, during our work session discussion today, uh, one of the council members, uh, brought up that, uh, this could be a good, uh, mechanism, so to speak, to use in future PDD projects. And my concern, uh, now is that, uh, this could set a precedent. Uh, I think we need a really strong sleds, you know, sensitive lands, uh, evaluation and development, um, document, I'll say, uh, that, uh, makes it clear to developers that the hard work of, uh, understanding the seismic, uh, activity and, and through trenching and all the things that need to be done, uh, r- really do need to be done on the front side, uh, and not give, uh, these, uh, allowances, uh, through the staff discretion later in the process. Uh, so I am going to ask my colleagues to, uh, consider postponing, uh, the vote that we were planning to take tonight on the PDD dash two, uh, uh, resolution. And so put that forward for discussion or deliberation.
Thank you, Councilmember Burrell. Um, at this point I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance three ninety-four.
I would move that we, uh, approve ordinance three ninety-four. Um, I, uh, understand that this applies simply to PDD two. There are some aspects of that ordinance that, uh, where making any change, it requires the entire process to be fulfilled again. Um, for something on this where they discovered a fault that was a little bit closer to the building than they thought and it required a reduction in density. Um, I think that it's very reasonable to add this language to that specific ordinance. Just so we're the same situation to come up again in the future. It still makes sense to me. Uh, so, um, each, uh, PDD zone that is created is customized to the area and to what is, is going on. So, um, I would, uh, again, move that we approve the ordinance.
I second that motion, Mayor.
Thank you. Final questions, comments? So I will now call for the vote. Uh, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Councilmember Bracken.
Yes.
Councilmember Newell.
Yes.
Councilmember Burrell.
No.
And I will vote yes. The motion passes with four to one. Okay. The final item on our agenda this evening is a, uh, approval of our consent calendar. Um, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from February seventh, two thousand twenty-three?
I move that we approve, Mayor.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That does it for this evening. I, can I also get a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
I second that.
You all in favor, say aye?